I mean, it was VCC, so I didn't know.
CPC things.
Got that from Terry, but.
I've been settled around.
Yeah.
So I don't know either. But you got it from Terry?
I did get it from him, yeah. But I don't know if it was like our committee or the local council or.
By the way, the hearing is scheduled for seven.
Guess I am Terry.
Absence of Terry.
No, yeah.
Of the agenda. Unless it went to my phantom email.
Um.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Oh, you mean. I might have stumbled on.
Good.
You gonna bring it in? Huh? Bring it in?
Yes, yeah.
I'll be on the one.
So what?
Just do all right.
Well, I. Okay.
Thank you. You're so fine, okay, you're.
I don't see these or.
I just like stock their meaningful lines. Hence why I'm like, yes, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, but you have.
Oh, yeah.
I like. I like. I absolutely. And then you and I like, but you know, it was great.
Right, right, right.
It's all this stuff.
Well, we have.
All your political.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just like having this.
Well. So you say you know her, she. We're just trying, we're trying to refer her second.
No. Maybe you can.
Well, because she has a new place at work.
So, um. Yeah, we could do the consent agenda.
Let it very briefly some.
I guess. We're gonna want to pull. Chumber, uh, Mulberry Street.
She was.
Yeah, I'm not sure why.
Skin.
Oh.
Oh, really? I think I meant the wrong.
Actually.
He, he said he used, he used to write it for us. He would. I heard you say.
Uh, he was lying. Actually, what is it? You should know something. Um. Yeah, so.
Anyway.
Well, no, well, we'll see, I'm not sure where they're.
He just runs a license commission, Natasha Yakovlev. I know.
Wasn't she the bid director?
Yeah, same. Yeah, now she's.
How many Natasha?
I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I don't know her. I, I'm, she. Acted as. Before this. This banding.
Right, it never existed at the beginning. Parents, it's all a dream.
It was exactly, it all extended.
Right. Maybe during the.
Yeah.
Some, some, some parallel news. It's totally typical. So, okay, you feeling better?
I feel much better.
That's great.
As well. Having, getting rid of the collar.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and I'm hopeful that. Um, tomorrow. People surgeon. A lot of sales. Did it for the food and perhaps. That, that, those that we do could. You could.
It's starting to be a while before I can drive. That's what. Begging favor again. Know how to ask you. Begging favors on.
Uh, that's frustrating. It's frustrating.
Folks are very.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's like this driveway apron and stuff. Yeah.
I don't, I don't blame you. I s- I spend Monday mornings trying to look at. And line it up. Trying to like figure it out, yeah. Make people come to you. Make people come to you.
Start that soup regardless of.
I'm, I'm trying.
Yeah, I'm being out.
Yeah. That's true. Need diversity on the city council.
I thought, I was saying. Sorry.
Good evening, welcome to the North Hampton City Council meeting of December fif- uh, fifteenth of twenty sixteen. I'm city council president, Bill Dwight, and I will be presiding. Um, before we convene our meeting, what we, our, our custom is to open the floor up for public comment. And, um, we invite the public to come speak on any topic, doesn't have to be necessarily, uh, anything that we're addressing this evening that's on the agenda. We just ask that if you're, if you do speak, please keep your comments under three minutes. Understand that the council is not allowed to respond, uh, to questions, that it's your time to speak, so we're not going to step on your time to speak. And, um, please acknowledge and recognize the decorum of the chamber and abide by, uh, rules of common decency. So that said, um, we have no one signed up, but is anyone interested in speaking? So. Come on up and state your name and address for the public record, and then, uh, you got three minutes.
Great, thank you, catching my breath.
Okay.
And cold. So. Uh, my name is Heidi Stevens, I live at eight Eupland Road in Leeds. And I would like to speak about the granting of permit to Wayne Andrews for the Mulberry Street Exchange. Um. I have some things I could pass out after I speak. I've always tried to be friendly to Wayne. A couple of years ago, he made a very convincing claim that his paperwork was just about finalized, and he would be opening up a secondhand shop. I offered to design a sign for him, which I did. I wanted him to succeed, and I also wanted the, the place to look better, because it's smack in the middle of Leeds Center. The building has its historical significance. Nanotuck Silk used to run a store there, and the first Leeds post office was located there. It's a stop on the guided Mill River Greenway history walks. Our groups have had to walk on the edge of the street rather than cross through Wayne's stuff. Anyway, nothing really came of an organized shop. Instead, for the past two years plus, uh, Wayne's stuff sprawls out into the street, across the public walkway, and down the steps leading to the sidewalk. Just recently, on reach of the post office, I had to carefully step over, not at extension cord at the top of the steps, and avoid broken pottery and glass along the way. I'm really tired of hearing my neighbors complain, and I really care about the village of Leeds and the safety of its residents. Unfortunately, Wayne continues to abuse city ordinances and has made threat to his neighbors via the Leeds Civic Association website, which I have the threat for you. I'm very uncomfortable with what has transpired. Leeds has endured his style of business for years, and in my view, rather than contributing to the community, it has been a detriment. I'm not happy to say that, but I think it is true. I wish for Wayne to do well, to be safe and succeed. However, I adamantly oppose that he be granted a business license for a secondhand shop at his current location. It will just be more of the same. Thank you. And I would like to just give you, um, uh, just pa- you could have these. Um, all right, so this is the, the threat that came to Leeds Civic Association. Here are four photographs of just the mess, this is not even that bad, it's just, these were sent to the police. And this is, this is a, um, a small printout of a, of a historical sign that Leeds is making, which will be kind of right near Wayne's building. We're trying very hard to get people interested in Leeds history and feel comfortable walking around the village and learning about it. Anyway, so that's why we.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, any, anyone else like to speak at this time? Excuse me.
My name is Ellen Rockett, Southern Eupland Road, Leeds. And I'm opposed to Mr. Andrews acquiring a secondhand dealer's license, because I've lived in Leeds for fifty-plus years in the same house. Um, and I have never seen the center of Leeds looking so messy as what, um, it has been. And for the last year and a half, anyway. And Mr. Andrews has been selling, and still is selling, used, um, items. And it also has spilled out along a public sideways where no one can go past, they have to walk out into the road to walk past the, um, his establishment. And there are at least three city counselors sitting here that are aware of this. And I know my husband has spoken to three of them, and I know they're concerned about it also. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, judging by the, as I scanned the room, it seems not likely that there's anyone else prepared to speak for public comment, so, um, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Bidwell?
Here.
Counselor Pyne?
Present.
Counselor Dwight?
Here.
Counselor Klein?
Here.
Counselor LaBard?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Nash?
Here.
Counselor Val?
Here.
Counselor Sarah?
Here.
We have a quorum, so we are convened. The, uh, we have a public hearing that's scheduled seven fifteen, and since it's seven oh six, we're going to go into other business. Um, and in fact, actually, why don't we go directly to the consent agenda?
Yes.
And, uh, that'll probably take us up to the hearing time, so, uh, without any objection, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion.
Uh, Counselor Klein?
I'd like to move to, uh, remove from the consent agenda the granting of a permit to, um, Wayne Andrews.
It's for license for the Mulberry Street Exchange, it's at Mulberry Street.
Thank you.
That's item C in the consent agenda.
Item D, I have it as.
Really? Yes.
D.
Which? Which?
No, it's D.
Sixteen point two.
It's D.
Probably have the old one. Uh, this is six, yeah, so item sixteen point two one five, so that.
Um, may I move to remove, um, from appointments, um, appointment of Natasha Yakovlev, license commission, and then separately, Roisin Quinn, um, to the redevelopment authority.
Okay, so there's three requests for, uh, so what we have left in the consent agenda, this is one, six, item sixteen point one nine three. It's approve appointments to various committees, uh, the following received positive recommendations from the Committee on City Services on December fifth, twenty sixteen. First, we have, um, the Agricultural Commission, Stanley Zowalik, of five thirty-eight Sylvester Road in Florence. We also have, uh, Jill St. Kerr, of forty-four Willow Street in Florence for the Arts Council. Conservation Commission, Jessica Pica, of Three High Street in Florence. And then, then the nominee that's been requested be removed from the agenda. Then what, next up is sixteen point one nine four, this is to approve the appointments of the redevelopment authority. And, uh, the following appointments received positive recommendations from the Committee on City Services on December fifth, twenty sixteen. That's Ed Skrotzky of Seventy Beacon Street in Florence, Patrick Goggins at Twenty Bridge Road in Florence, and Christopher Cahlean, or Cahlean, of, uh, three eighty-four South Street. And then the other appointee was the request to be removed from the consent agenda, as was item C sixteen point two one five, so that's what we have. So there was a motion, uh, Counselor LaBard moved.
Yes.
Is there a second for the consent agenda?
Second.
Point of order?
Yes.
Did we mention D, or did I, man, I didn't hear you say that.
Now, we didn't mention D because I don't have it, that's why.
Okay.
Uh, or C.
I think he called it C.
C, C and E.
Uh, approve the minutes. I'm sorry, that, that's, yeah, okay, see, okay, I'm gonna get the right agenda here in a second, but yes, so. Also included in the consent agenda is approval of minutes from December first, twenty sixteen meeting.
This is the agenda.
And then also, item sixteen point two one seven, the appointment of Molly Hale to the Public Shade Tree Commission, and that's, that's for referral to the Committee on City Services. So now with the proper consent agenda is addressed, uh, is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. Yep. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The consent agenda passes, and we still have five minutes, so let's, um, so we'll go right to, uh, the license commission appointment for Natasha Yakolov, Yakovlev. I've always, I've filled her last name multiple, multiple times, so it's one forty-seven Nanotuck Street in Florence, and this is, um, for the license commission to, uh, fill the, uh, William Rosen's position.
I move approval of the appointment.
Okay, is there a second? A second? A discussion?
If I may speak to it, um, I pulled these two off because I wasn't present at the Committee on City Services meeting, um, and so that's why there are neutral recommendations for these, but I just wanted to provide, uh, comments and give other counselors the opportunity to comment on these, just for the sake of process. Um, I'm happy to, um, recommend Natasha for this position, she, as we know, was the director of the bid for a number of years, and she's currently the board chair of Safe Passage, I believe, so she's been involved in the community in many ways. I know she's been eager to get involved, um, on a board or commission in the city, and so I think she would be a good fit for this, this commission, so I just wanted to say that for the record.
Uh, other discussion on the appointment? Uh, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now then we have Roisin Quinn, and I assume, uh, similar, similar condition here.
Some, I'll move a, I'll move a, appoint, the appointment of the, this person. And, um, I stumbled saying that because I, I wasn't able to reach, uh, Ms. Quinn by phone. Um, I think it's important that the redevelopment authority reach a quorum again and, and become active, um, but other counselors may be able to speak better to Ms. Quinn's.
Can I get a second?
Oh.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Bidwell?
Uh, yes, I'd be glad to speak on, 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 on her behalf. I knew Roisin when she worked at the Chamber of Commerce, I knew her when she worked at Goggins Real Estate, and she is now his office manager at Cancer Connection. Um, she's a stalwart member of the community and, um, uh, would contribute, uh, I'm sure, in very positive ways to the redevelopment authority.
Any other comments or thoughts on the appointment? Okay, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And that still gives us two minutes of giving, um, the consent agenda in, in its entirety has now been approved, and rather than recess for finance.
There's another.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I knew there was one other thing. Okay, so item sixteen point two one five, it's a petition for a secondhand dealer's license for Mulberry Street Exchange at seven Mulberry Street in Leeds, can I have a motion to put it on the floor, please?
Make a motion.
Okay. Counselor Klein?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, recommend strongly to my fellow counselors that we not approve this license, this has been, uh, this location has been an issue for several years now in Leeds, you heard from the public comment, but, um, I really wanna emphasize that it really poses a public health risk, I think, a public safety risk, this business. He's never received a permit before, this particular person, but he has been operating in a location that is zoned for business, but not with a permit, uh, for secondhand, as a secondhand dealer. Um, he, it, the material that he has outside, three hundred sixty-five days a year, is dirty, messy, heaped, um, in piles. It spills out into the street, creating a real public safety hazard. Um, an enormous amount of staff time, city staff time has gone into trying to manage the situation, from the police department to, uh, the health department, health inspectors go out there regularly, the building inspector, we've had the planning department involved, um, with the, the GIS mapmaker, trying to figure out where the public way is versus, uh, private space. So, uh, countless hours have gone into trying to manage, uh, this business, not very successfully, we recently were able finally to issue a cease and desist order. Um, this person has been evicted by his landlord and is supposed to be out by the end of the month, so it's a little bit unclear as to why, um, at this juncture, he's requested the permit. Uh, there is some thought that he is trying to make a case for why he shouldn't be evicted, if he in fact has a, a business permit for the location. Um, but there are countless issues, some of, many of them personal, that I don't feel would be ethical for me to share here, but there are a number of issues with the business that, um, really kind of spill over into criminal, uh, behavior. And so I feel really strongly that we should not, as a city council, would not be responsible on our parts to grant a permit, um, for a secondhand dealer's license at this location.
Counselor LaBard?
Um, I have to agree with Counselor Klein. My, my family live in Leeds, born and raised in Leeds, and every time we go to Leeds, my husband has been very, very upset about that area. It's a disgrace, and why something wasn't done way back it should have been done. I mean, it looks like a junkyard out there, plus the fact I know people who know him, and everything that Counselor Klein is saying is facts, and I, I cannot support this. I, I feel that how he's been operating a business, which he didn't have a license, which we found out, family found out, and, um, I can't support it.
Any other discussion?
I have a.
Uh, sure.
Question, maybe for the counsel from Ward Seven. Um, my question is, you, you made a statement that the area is zoned for business, but not for this particular type of business, did I hear you correctly?
No, I didn't say that, it's, it's, uh, zoned for a business, a small business, but, uh, it, it's the particular way in which this business has been handled that is problematic, not that it isn't.
I, I def- thank you, I definitely understand that, I thought you were making an additional point about zoning, okay, thank you.
Um, the petitioner has actually come in, you're Wayne Andrews.
Hi.
Can you step up the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, accept a motion to recognize, Mr. Andrews, or the.
Make a motion to recognize.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, we, coincidentally, just came in, just as we're reviewing your, your petition to operate the Mulberry Street Exchange. Um, there have been a number of complaints, and there's some strongly expressed concerns about, uh, your, your business and its ability to comply with city ordinances and rules. You wanna speak to those points?
Which points exactly, sir?
Well, um, specifically, uh, you, you've been operating without a license to date, is that correct? You also, your, your business, such as it is, is actually been, uh, in interfering in the public way, in access to the public way? You wanna speak to that point?
Yes, sir, actually, I, uh, we own three feet out, or the landlord does, um, so sometimes I have actually bordered, I've gone over that boundary, um, I'll, I'll admit that. I would certainly, um, I've actually taken major efforts recently to clean that up, um, I've, I've just got a dumpster to get rid of a bunch of stuff. We also need to take into account that, uh, there's five apartments there, and there's been several, like, leave behinds, um, so I made a major effort into cleaning that up. We have a dumpster on site, I'm getting rid of a bunch of garbage, a bunch of scrap metal, um, and moving that along, um, trying to clean that site up.
Um, but this has been going, going for a number of years?
Yes, sir.
Why have you had difficulty being able to conform to date?
It's never really been a problem until last year, actually, sir. Last year, I, uh, um, I was approached by the Leeds Civic Association and, um, a city, a city counselor, um, as far as I was selling water on the bike path. Um, and as soon as I, they, they came to me, and I asked them to leave the property, and since then, there's been, like, seven complaints, they're all from, um, the head of Leeds Civic Association and the, uh, city counselor out there.
Um. What's the status of your tenancy in the building?
My tenancy right now is my, the apartment, actually where I live at, which I live right next door to the store, has been under failure, um, from the, uh, Housing Authority, um, for a year. So, um, Monday, actually, we're going to mediation in housing court, um, basically so that he can get funding to move me out and rental, rental the apartment.
What about, uh, your business?
The business, um, um, what do you mean?
Your business is located in your apartment?
No, it's right next door.
Right, so what's the.
There's two separate units.
What's the tenancy status of your business?
The tenancy, um, status of my business is good, um, my landlord, Mark Eager, has, uh, certainly, um, been willing to work along with me as far as everything goes. Um, the, I mean, I, I can't even have a tag sale out there now without getting a fine, you know? Which I've, I've paid fines on, um, so.
Um, any other questions of the petitioner? Uh, he, he asked the, I'm sorry, this is, this is on the council. Any other questions of the petitioner or the council? Okay, thank you very much.
Can I just clarify something? Because the way that was just said, he's not moving out, he's just, so the.
I got it.
Be renovated, and then his.
Yeah.
I got it.
That, that all has to do with funding, because I'm actually there on a VASH, um, about to assist subsidy housing. So, um, he, we have to go into mediation, so he can get the funding to move me into a hotel for a couple of weeks and bring that apartment up to code.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Klein?
Um, I have talked directly to the landlord, and my understanding from the landlord is that, uh, that there's an eviction process in place for both the business.
Actually, we have mediation on Monday.
Which came out of an eviction process of both the business and your tenancy, and that he is not interested, in fact, in continuing to have you in the building, so, um, when we're considering a license for some, a business that, um, probably won't be there after the end of the month, it's, I think it throws into question.
Actually, that's going into, um, that's going into January thirtieth, and, um, my big thing is I can't even open a tag sale there without getting a fine, you know what I mean? So I need to get rid of some stuff, um, and we've, we've got a dumpster on the property to get rid of, um, there's five apartments in that building, as you know, um, so that, I mean, there's so much leave behinds, you know what I mean, that we've actually had to rent a dumpster to get rid of that stuff. Um, the, uh, it's not actually an eviction, um, chapter one fifteen pays my rent, all right, and so somebody along the way perjured themselves and said that I was not paying a rent, the rent has been paid, um, all the way along the way, um, every red cent. So, the, that whole thing is, is actually just a technicality to get us into mediation.
I understand otherwise from the landlord, and it's my understanding that the landlord, um, rented the dumpsters in order to clean out the space, um, in order to, uh, empty it out completely and to go proceed with the eviction. So that's my understanding from, directly from the landlord, with whom I spoke last week.
Okay. Um, any other, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Andrews.
I, I, I mean, what I, what I would actually like right now would be like, some kind of thirty-day license or sixty-day license to get rid of stuff, to sell stuff, I mean, there's many, many collections, I've collected stuff for years and years and years, um, many of you people know me from around town, um.
Well, this, this, this license, not a thirty-day license, and we don't have the discretion to.
I understand, uh.
So, so the, what this would be, this would be for the year, and so, so we don't, we don't give temporary licenses based on, so, but, um, if this should fail, you can repetition, but if, but I don't know if it'll fail, so I don't know yet, so. I can presume a vote. So thank you very much, I appreciate your input. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, so the license would need to be renewed April first, or you would be able to reapply in April, or should it fail? Okay. Any other discussion?
Um. Can I?
Counselor.
This is on your certificate expiration date, November 16, 2020. What is that for?
Are you looking directly at the documents?
I'm looking at the business certificate. New filing, December 11, 16, 16.
Yeah, that's not the license of for that.
Mr. Andrews needed to file a business certificate with the City Court to petition for a petition for the license as a secondhand dealer.
Okay, so this is being... Okay, so this business certificate has already been approved, and it's for four years?
Correct.
So it is a certified business. We, it's up to us to grant or not the license to operate. What's your pleasure here, roll call or a voice vote?
Roll call.
Counsel Carney?
No.
Counsel what?
No.
Counsel what?
No.
Counsel LeBarge?
No.
Counsel Murphy?
No.
Counsel Nash?
No.
Counsel O'Donnell?
No.
Counsel Shearer?
No.
Counsel Biddle?
No.
Okay, that, the petition for that license does fail, and the opportunity to reapply would be April 1st. It's coming April. Uh, no, I'm sorry, now that's completed, and that's, you can speak with counselors after the meeting, but now the business is done. So, let's see, I think that's all the items on the consent agenda that brings us up to 727. So, in accordance with Section 6.1 of the Northampton City Charter, the city council will hold a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments for the City of Northampton Administrative Code summarized as follows. One, delete the current Part 1, Section 2.06, Established Information Technology Department and its Authorities and Responsibilities, and establish a Part 1, Section 2.06. This says, Information Technology Services Department with authorities and responsibilities shall be expanded to include the Northampton Public Schools. And also, two, delete the current Part 2, Multiple Member Appointed Organizations, Section 3.0, Established Board of Alminers and its Authorities and Responsibilities, and establish a Part 2, Multiple Member Appointed Organizations, Section 3.0, the Whiting Street Fund Committee with authorities and responsibilities. And the city council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. Are there any opponents? Oh, actually, I'll call for...
Move to open public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a motion, a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opponents to the order? Proponents? We'll hear from the proponents. Well, here's one now.
So, obviously, I'm the person who put forward the administrative order, so I've spoken to you already at your previous meeting about the change to the Information Technology Department. You'll also have a second reading on an order on state law that makes that possible. I do have Mr. Pagan here as well. I will quickly talk about the Board of Alminers change, which is the second part of the order. I provided some background on what the Whiting Street Trust account, how it was set up, the history of it, the history of the Board of Alminers, and the reasons why I believe that this change to this committee and the way the committee would disperse these funds would bring it up into contemporary practice and would be a much more efficient way for this body to carry out the wishes of Mr. Street, which is to ensure that people who are in need get these funds. So you've seen the proposal, and I can answer questions if we have about it. I know you'll also take this up to vote on it later in the meeting, so I can also answer questions then.
I'll give the fact there's not a Q behind you for testifying in the hearing.
The other piece is if you were, be willing, you could close the public hearing and then bring up those items.
Well, that's, that was my intent, actually, but I was going to offer the counselors an opportunity to ask questions. Now, if they had questions relative to any dimension of this item? No? Okay. I'll accept a motion, close the public hearing.
Will we close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, please.
Aye.
So I'm going to make the request that first we move up, where do we go here? Item 16.209, this is the second reading. I think it's appropriate that we approve the state authorization first before we go and proceed with the other half of this, so that's in order to authorize a consolidation of IT service functions, and that's the second reading approval.
Second.
Okay, so, or any questions about that on the second reading? We...
I should have Mr. Pagan come to the meeting so that, because you had requested at the last meeting that he would come.
Exactly.
So I would also, if you recognized him at some point, he could speak as well to this.
And I'll accept a motion, actually, to recognize Antonio Pagan.
Second.
Oh yeah, we don't need to, yeah, that's right.
We don't need to.
So...
He's part of my posse, so he's recognized.
That's right, it's your crew. My bad. Counsel Klein.
I just wanted to say thank you for the budget information. That was helpful to see the numbers, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pagan has to, is struggling to get the new phone system installed, so we don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to drag him in for too long, so...
Good night. Thank you for having me today. And yeah, it is a very important day for the project, and we have about 14 people around the school business doing some jobs, so definitely I would appreciate having the time here. So, well, I would like to be able to answer your questions. I would like to put the presentation here, I'm going to take over if you don't mind.
Go for it.
He's probably the only person who could ever do that.
Okay, just wait.
Wi-Fi?
Just wait.
Putin's going to come up.
There you go. So let me, yeah, this is a very good system, allows for a lot. I put together a brief presentation here for, basically to clarify some questions that I think that you have. So I'm going to bring up the old chart that you saw last time with a little bit of clarification on the colors and dotted lines there to make it more clear. So basically, in order to do the chair services and the consolidation of the two teams, or the, I think that's the way we are calling it, consolidation. So basically, we have the current staff at the IT team in the schools, working together with the IT team in the city. Under my leadership, and then with the addition of one more position at the schools, considering that the Director of Technology is retiring there. I would like to speak a little bit about this, and then you can ask a question. Basically, the whole focus of this is separate, in some ways, what is the technology management of the infrastructure and the technology management of the infrastructure and technology into different ways, but at the same time, enhance the capacity of the overall team to provide services to both the city and schools. This is a process that would take some time to get accomplished, but immediately we'll have the benefit of having a person focusing on digital literacy and computer science, which is a big, important topic at the schools everywhere, in Northampton, including the superintendent has made it a big item for them. Instead of funding, you can see different colors there means different funding schools would be the green, and the blue would be the green. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
This is essentially what the mayor went over as well, in the same hierarchy.
Yes. My colors didn't show up as well on your screen for some reason.
Yeah, your slide is much better than the mayor's.
Yes.
Gives me enormous confidence.
Even if it's the same one, it's...
He didn't break into the system as well, I...
Yeah, he's a CIO. And in fact, actually, I think the consensus was, in the first reading, that this actually makes considerable sense, and this type of consolidation with your oversight would be able to exploit people in various departments who weren't otherwise working possibly across purposes, but certainly not in concert, and allows you to oversee all of these things. So, and which is, I mean, I had said the last time that I was pleased to see this because as we do, we've had our 15, 20-year shakeout here, as far as we, you know, as we move into the new age, as it were. I'm really grateful to see this type of organization with this kind of vision, and so I'm pretty comfortable with what you're proposing personally. Counsel LeBarge, are you raising your hand, or are you just...
Yes.
Okay, okay.
With your staff, and then going in and combining between the school department and your department, how do your staff feel about that?
Well, the staff is actually excited about it, in some sense. I know it's not going to be an easy task to get two teams to start working together all of a sudden, it never happens, it takes time to get used to it. And at the beginning, they will continue working on their own assignments, and they will not be merging. The purpose and the plan is that with some strategic planning process, we'll be able to use this position to create some redundancy between the positions, which I have to say that in both sides, we are really, you know, I would not say understaffed, but we have only one person for each area, basically, and then we have a lot of cross-training with the two people on each team. By having this, you can see that there are two people there on each system, on each team right now, that are very good on networking, for example, and now they will have a backup person that before they didn't have.
Okay, so they like, for the principal secretary, you have one secretary.
Yep.
So that one secretary is going to do all that?
Yes, which, you know, the title is secretary, but she does a lot more than secretary. She does training for units, she does her desk, first answer, she is the person that basically pre-ash the calls on our, on the city side. On the school side, they have a part-time person that takes most of those, or student interns that take most of those calls. So that's something that definitely needs to be rearranged as we merge the two teams. That's, part of the vision is to create a team that is, you know, multi-disciplinary, and at the same time, we can, for example, if one person goes out sick for two weeks, at this point, what happened is basically the director has to take over that position and then do the job that that person normally does.
That's where my concern was, because the principal secretary, which would probably be Nancy, if she was out ill, who would take her place?
Antonio.
Yes.
We do a lot of cross-training in other cities. We do, for example, Frank is the database administrator, but he does a lot of things that Nancy also does. So when Nancy is not there, we reassign, during that time, we reassign those tasks. And we, there's a lot of overlap, basically, there's only one or two things that are very specialist, based on the city. On the school side, I don't have the details, because I have meetings with them, I have, I know how the schools work, but I don't know how this team has been working for years, which is, you know, is something that I need to get into it.
Well, I think your department, and the superintendent, and the mayor, all want to go ahead and move forward, and I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Pagan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Your honor?
I was just making sure he was going to get the screen back to you guys.
That would be awkward.
You got to take it now.
Do you have any other...
I don't have any other, it was just mainly if you had any further questions about it before the vote on this particular item.
Well, this is, any other questions? Because we're on the second reading. Okay. I'm going to ask the assistant to call roll. No, I don't, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, so we skipped over to 209, second reading.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Shearer?
Yes.
Counsel Biddle?
Yes. I had that passes in second reading. Well, while we're at it, how about we just get rid of these orders altogether? Item 16.212, this is an administrative order, and the IT service function consolidation and the Board of Alminers change to Whiting Street Fund Committee.
Move to approve.
This requires only one reading. Any other questions on this item? No other discussion? Roll call, please. Poor Pam.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Shearer?
Yes.
Counsel Biddle?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Carr?
Yes.
That passes. Now, we're going to process for finance committee, and I pass the gavel over to Counsel Murphy. All right, Pam, would you call the rule of finance, please?
Counsel Murphy?
Here.
Present. Counsel LeBarge?
Present.
Counsel Nash?
Here.
We have a full committee again, which is great. Our first matter of business is to approve our minutes of November 17, 2016. Do we have a motion?
To approve.
Second. Any corrections or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, a lot of things from the CPC tonight, and we have Sarah here to, with maps and charts and things to show us what's going on. The first one is 16216, upon the recommendation of the mayor, and the Conservation Commission ordered it, whereas the Open Space and Recreation Plan 2011 to 2018 recommends preserving open space on Burt's Pit Road to preserve Northampton's only bog and rare species habitat and provide for multi-use trails to serve the area, and whereas the city has already approved the purchase of 110 acres on Burt's Pit Road, Stone Ridge Road, and Overlook Drive for the purposes of habitat preservation, as well as the creation of affordable housing, and whereas Burt's Bog is an environmentally and historically important location that also provides opportunities for trails and habitat connections, and whereas Michael D. Kaminsky has offered to sell 5.5 acres on Burt's Pit Road directly adjacent to Burt's Bog for $110,000, and whereas no general fund appropriation is requested, now therefore it be ordered that the City of Northampton, through its Conservation Commission, is authorized to purchase or otherwise acquire any fee easement and/or other interests in the above land for the purposes of open space preservation and the creation of multi-use recreational trails. The mayor is authorized to grant a conservation restriction per Mass. General Law 184, Section 31, on said land. We have a motion, finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second? All right, and once the mayor stops distracting Ms. LaValle, she's going to come and talk to us.
Now, did you get my presentation? I have one.
You're going to start the timer on her? You have three minutes.
Is this part of the presentation, or is it the CPC one? No. So this, this one is not a Community Preservation Committee recommendation, this is the only one of the whole bunch that is not, and also the only acquisition that hasn't yet been approved by the city council. So this, this property is directly adjacent to the Burt's Bog project. This owner came in to talk about a possible development of his 5.5 or so acres. Definitely a developable parcel would require a wetlands crossing, which he would be absolutely entitled to do because of the way the wetlands laws are constructed, and he definitely has enough area to be able to build a house, but that's not the areas that we prefer development to go in. And he's also expressed interest in buying one of the developable lots from the, that's part of the Burt's Bog project. So there's an arrow pointing to this, this small five and a half acre piece next to the larger Burt's Bog.
You sent us a bigger picture of it, too.
I know.
You got the bigger one here?
Yeah, and the next slide shows the blow-up and the orthophobe.
There it is. The purple piece.
So the light green is area that's what's currently called the Brookwood Marsh, we'll be changing it to Burt's Bog to more reflected status as a, as a bog. be changing it to Burt's Bog to more reflected status as a bog, not a marsh. And the Kaminsky parcel is the one shown in purple. So, it really makes sense as an addition to this project, and it just happened to come up at the right time.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. And I talked with Wayne today. Burt's Bog. Where is that actually located?
So, the bog itself is, let's see if, oh, no, the screen eats it. Okay. But the bog itself is, it's between Stone Ridge Road and Crestview and Ellington. It sort of goes south from there and then east. You can definitely see the wellens as you go closer or farther.
If you go directly in back of Ellington and Crestview.
Yes, that's definitely.
That's where it originated, and we had the beaver problems and all that over there. Because some people asked me today, what's Burt's Bog?
So, it's a historic peat bog that was, it was used as part of the North Hampton State Hospital.
First time I ever heard that.
And it was used as, the state hospital dug up peat for farming and many owners before that did. And that's the only bog, not only in North Hampton, but one of the very few in Western Mass.
Any other questions for Ms. LaValle on this one? Counsel?
What's the difference between a bog and a marsh?
Bogs have more acidic environments, so they're not, they don't have as many species as a marsh would. Definitely not as much plant growth. If you walk out behind Ellington and walk out past the stuff that's growing, you can definitely see that there's a mat of peat. There's not a whole lot of stuff out there.
The peat's highly acidic and
Yes.
doesn't, it's not conducive to grow.
It is not.
Thank you. So, why isn't it Pete's Bog?
Burt was the guy that owned it. So, we like, we wanted to go back to the historic annotations.
I remember. Counselor LeBarge, wasn't that Missoula's farm in there? I think it was. It was Missoula's farm in there.
So, you got Burt's Bog and Burt's Pit.
Yes.
Burt's doing okay. So, don't hear any more questions? All in favor of a positive recommendation in Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great. Thank you.
Sarah.
All right. Now, these are all the CPC ones.
Yes. All of the ones that follow our.
All the ones that follow our CPC. So, the first one is 16218, an order for the Beaverbrook Greenway improvements, Broadbrook Coalition and the Leeds Civic Association. It's for $16,947. Upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Commission, order that whereas the Broadbrook Coalition and Leeds Civic Association submitted a CPA application for the rehabilitation of a six-acre portion of Beaverbrook-Broadbrook Greenway, including wildlife, blind trails, picnic tables, and habitat improvements. And whereas the project has a great deal of public support and will increase public accessibility to a unique conservation area. And whereas CPA funds will leverage the volunteer work of members of the Broadbrook Coalition and the Leeds Civic Association, two of the city's valued open space partners. And whereas on November 30th, 2016, the conservation, or not the conservation, but the Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $16,947 in community preservation funds be used to support the project. Now, therefore it be ordered that $16,947 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Broadbrook Coalition and Leeds Civic Association for the Beaverbrook-Broadbrook Rehabilitation Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. We have a motion in?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. So, the next slide shows where this area is located in the city.
It's still Burt's Bog, isn't it? Yeah, there we go.
One more. Okay. So, to the left side of the screen is Route 9. You can see there's a large wetlands area that separates the Route 9 frontage from the rest of the parcel. It's an area that's really cool and unique, lots of beavers and birds and turtles and all kinds of cool stuff, but it's not really very accessible currently. So, the Broadbrook Coalition and the Leeds Civic Association teamed up to put together this proposal that will include a small parking area at the corrosion control facility, trails, picnic areas, and just things to help people.
So, the trail will get you through the wetlands to the?
It will not, no. So, this is limited to that frontage.
Can you get around the wetland to get back into the rest of the property?
You can. It's, I've done it, but only in the winter. It's tough. You need some boots. There is another way to access it through the Smith-Vogue property.
The forest.
On your side.
Private parcels in between, but a lot of people follow the snowmobile trail. And the next slide shows a closer-up map of what Broadbrook Coalition and Leeds Civic are planning to do.
Oh, okay. So, it's everything's between Route 9 and the wetland?
Yes.
Does everything, every project you propose have to be alliterative now? Is that the, is it, we have Burt's Bog?
We try. It sounds nice.
I think they're trying to make it hard for me to read them.
I swear to God, that's what it was.
Insidious plan.
I didn't, I didn't name the street. I just named the property.
Counselor?
She was first.
Well, she's first, okay.
Sarah, I think this is excellent. I think the Leeds Association, working together, volunteers, this is what it's all about, your community working with each other. And I think this is an excellent idea.
Absolutely. This parcel was acquired in 2010, and the Community Preservation Committee definitely felt that this was just a great teaming up between two city groups and would make a great project.
Yep.
Counselor Klein, you?
I was just gonna say basically the same thing, that the Leeds Civic Association, I mean, people who live in Leeds have an enormous amount of pride and involvement with the natural environment around our neighborhoods and work, everybody on the Leeds Civic Association and beyond, everyone in Leeds, works really hard to keep all of the woods and these areas just pristine and beautiful and always thinking about how to enhance things even further. And this is just a perfect example, as Counselor LeBarge says, of a community group just contributing to the city in this incredible way. So, I just want to encourage everyone to appreciate this and, of course, vote for it.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. And I just want to say, in Leeds itself, it's always been that way. It's very close-knit. Everybody works together. And that is great about that, about the town of Leeds.
Good. Counselor?
Just curious, what's the timetable for this trail work, et cetera?
They have all of the permitting that's necessary to do this. I believe they're ready to start in the spring, as soon as snow melts.
Right. Any more questions on this one?
No.
Since everybody seems to like it, all in favor of a positive recommendation in Finance?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Now, we're back to Burt's Bog again. This is 16219, an order for Burt's Bog Affordable Housing and Open Space. Order that whereas the North Hampton Conservation Commission and the North Hampton Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted a CPA application for Burt's Bog project to create three affordable home ownership lots, as well as permanently protect 120 acres of critical open space. And whereas the housing lots will be restricted to individuals and families earning 100% of the area medium income or below. And whereas Burt's Bog is an environmentally and historically important location that also provides opportunities for trail and habitat connections. And whereas CPA funds will be used to match a grant for $256,000, $256 in state local acquisitions for national diversity grant funds. And whereas the project meets the goals of the Sustainable North Hampton Plan, the Housing Needs Assessment, the North Hampton Community Preservation Plan, and Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan, provide affordable housing, protect open space, and provide for passive recreation. Whereas on November 30th, 2016, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $234,700 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now, therefore be ordered that, page two, that $234,700 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the North Hampton Conservation Commission and the North Hampton Office of Planning and Sustainability for the Burt's Bog project, and that the grantees meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically that $150,000 is appropriated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve, and $84,700 is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Fund Reserve. Motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay. So, the same area again, already approved by city council. The next map shows a more detailed, close-up. So, the area that says City of North Hampton, Brookwood Marsh Conservation Area, is everything that will be preserved as open space. And the area shown as excluded area adjacent to Burt's Pit Road will be some market rate lots, as well as three dedicated affordable housing lots. They may go to Habitat for Humanity, but they will be in perpetuity affordable to those at 100% AMI or below.
Now, as part of this project, wasn't there a discussion that up on overlook, there'd be some lots up there, too?
The developer is retaining some lots that are not shown on this map, so that it's more private.
Okay. So, rather than us doing it, he's keeping some lots. Okay. Because then thought there was gonna be some up there, too. Counselor LeBarge, should you head?
Yeah. I think it's very, very valuable of what we're doing here out in Ward 6. We're looking again at affordable homes, just like on Glendale Road. And preserving 114 acres, everything is starting to flow now, the trails going around by Mineral Hills, also working our way up on West Stanton Road, going across, going up to the ridge. You can see the pattern. But I think the great thing is preserving this conservation land, and I'm hearing so much about the affordable homes, single-family. And this is great.
Counselor O'Donnell, do you have a question?
Yeah, if I could. I'm just curious how the 100% of area median income was decided, arrived at.
Some of the downtown units, like the single-room occupancies, go very, very low, down to 60% AMI or some even below that. But because these are homeownership units, the 100% AMI is sort of the standard that is used for ownership. And it's also the most that can be used for CPA awards.
Right. So, as we define affordability, in our code anyway, so that, as I recall, is 80% area median income, but that's just for rental. But if you're a homeownership, then we can extend up to 100. That's just different standards?
It's, under the CPA law, it could be ownership or rental. It's not differentiated. But the market forces that drive this would make 100% a lot easier to work with.
CPA, I'm sorry.
So, these would be more like working, working-class units rather than very, very low affordability.
Okay. But the CPA law is fine with it being 100%.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And it goes even higher for senior affordability units, but just not to have to get into that. We kept it at 100%.
Thank you.
And as I understand, underneath the value is capped. You know, you can't, the appreciation can't go wherever it goes. But these aren't subsidized, so you have to be able to afford to buy them. You know, so you have to have the income to actually buy them, but that they have to, when they're resold, they have to remain affordable for the next buyer.
Yes. So, this will have a deed restriction.
So, it, yeah, so that they, they'll remain affordable because they can't appreciate to wherever they want to go. They have to stay, and the person that buys it has to be qualified to be able to buy it.
Yes.
Counselor, do you have a question?
Can you tell us roughly what 100% of median is?
I, off the top of my head, not exactly, but it's around, I believe, $40,000 for one, for one person.
Yeah.
So, you couldn't more, and I can send that out to you. I'll double-check and make sure, but you, so that one person wouldn't be able to be making more than about $40,000 per year.
Counselor?
Yes. Isn't it on the ice pond, we do have a couple units
There's some mixed area, yeah.
that are affordable also? Great.
Yeah. So, this will also have, both will have some market rate as well as affordable.
Counselor Bigwell?
You referred to Habitat. So, will there be an RFP go out and it's
Yes.
likely that they would be one of the organizations
Yes, absolutely.
that would be qualified to respond?
Any other questions on this one? And all in favor of a positive recommendation in Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Right, the next is 16220, Broadbrook to Beaverbrook Acquisition from the North Hampton Conservation Commission. Order that whereas the North Hampton Conservation Commission and the North Hampton Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted a CPA application for the purchase of an 18-acre parcel to add to the Broadbrook Greenway. And whereas this parcel will serve as the first connection from Fitzgerald Lake West to the Beaverbrook and the Broadbrook Greenway. And whereas the project meets the goals of the Sustainable North Hampton Plan, the North Hampton Community Preservation Plan, and Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan to protect open space and provide for passive recreation. And whereas the parcel provides opportunities for trail connections from Haydenville Road to Fitzgerald Lake, and will increase access opportunities to the Beaverbrook and the Broadbrook Greenway. And whereas on November 30th, 2016, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $40,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now, therefore it be ordered that $40,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the North Hampton Conservation Commission and the North Hampton Office of Planning and Sustainability for the Broadbrook Connection Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically the $40,000 is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. Could a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
So, these were some photos that I forgot about that were taken by Lori Sanders of the lovely condition at Burt's Bog. But the next slide is the same map that we used. So, there's the locus map, so it's in the northern part of the city. And the next slide is a locus map that shows this in relation to the Fitzgerald Lake Conservation Area to the east and the Beaverbrook-Broadbrook Greenway to the west. So, this is sort of a neat acquisition that fills in a hole. We've always had this gap between North Farms Road and parcels that are protected on Route 9, and this is the first one that will fill that gap. So, while the rear portion of the Beaverbrook-Broadbrook Greenway isn't easily accessible from Route 9, it will be very easily accessible from this parcel.
And it's hard to see from here, but is there a little teeny linkage from that big piece out to North Farms?
There is. It's very thin, but it has frontage on North Farms.
So, you can walk through there?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's misleading, but it definitely had enough room for a driveway, so this could have been developed properly to one of these family homes.
Okay. So, this is how you get in, because you can't get through the marsh. Questions on Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. On it, it says whereas that there's opportunities for trail connections from Haydenville Road to Fitzgerald Lake. Can you explain that whereabouts on Haydenville Road?
So, Haydenville Road is the, is on the western side of the map?
Right.
On the left. So, it's, Broadbrook Coalition is hoping at some point to be able to cross this marsh. So, if that does happen, then you'd be able to easily get from this area to the other. But you can, you can cross the marsh if you have waiters on, depending on the time of year. And this year, with the drought, it was actually pretty easy.
Any more questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The next is 16221, an order for the Connecticut River Greenway improvements. Order that whereas North Hampton Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted a CPA application for completion of necessary paving and insulation of an accessible boarding pier at the Connecticut River Greenway Riverfront Park. And whereas the project meets the goals of the Sustainable North Hampton Plan, North Hampton Community Preservation Plan, and Open Space Recreation Multi-Use Trail Plan regarding continued development of a park and boathouse with riverfront access. And whereas significant private funds have already been invested in the site, and the project will allow more people to access the river. And whereas CPA funds will be used as a local match for a $90,000 federal land and water conservation fund grant, whereas CPA funds will be used first for peer accessibility and paving to match accessible sidewalk elevations, and then to complete paving on the rest of the site. And whereas on November 30th, 2016, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $90,000 Community Preservation Act funds be used to support the project. Now, therefore it be ordered that $90,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the North Hampton Office of Planning and Sustainability for the Connecticut River Greenway Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the council, specifically the $90,000 is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve account. We have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
So, this project has been in development for many, many years. As you all know, there was a grand opening held this fall. The boathouse is shown on the top left of the slide. That was constructed by North Hampton Youth and Community Rowing. There were some cost overruns in the project due to unforeseen circumstances with wetlands and permitting and some other things that didn't allow the city to finish the paving and do as much work to the dock as we wanted to. So, you can see that the stormwater structures don't match the elevation on the pavement that they're supposed to, and therefore don't function as well as they should. If you're in a wheelchair, you have to jump a little rise to be able to take the walkway down. It doesn't work as well as we wanted to. So, we already have a $90,000 federal grant in hand, and this will be the local match.
You would have good brakes in your wheelchair for that walkway, boy.
It's, it's
Went up in Hadley. Counselor LeBarge?
I was gonna ask you about the handicap accessible, because I know that was talked about last year. So, they are going to So they are going to improve that.
Yes, so this will address the paving issues and also some work to the dock that will make it accessible for people with disabilities more times during the year.
Any other questions on this? Counselor Bidwell?
I was just gonna, just gonna say, this is an absolute jewel of a property, and it's wonderful to see this very long site search and process of developing has come to almost fruition. So it's great that this remaining accessibility and paving work be possible at this time. It's something we should really be proud of.
Just a question. Any plan to put restrooms out there for drawing all these people out there?
No. Northampton Youth and Community Rowing and the Recreation Commission are working on the actual programs offered at the site, and I'm not sure if they have plans for restrooms.
Counselor?
I believe for the foreseeable future, it's going to be porta-potties, which is the way a lot of crew boathouses operate until some point down the road where there's actual plumbing in sight. But there's, yeah, there's water sewer issues.
Yeah, there's no water out there, there's no sewer out there.
No.
All right. So any other questions on this project? All in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next one is 16-222, Hampshire County Courthouse Restoration. Order that whereas the Hampshire Council of Governments submitted a CPA application for stabilization and preservation of the Hampshire County Courthouse. And whereas the project provides a broad public benefit to the citizens of Northampton and the region by preserving historically important civic building. And whereas CPA funds would only be used to match for state capital bond funds. And whereas on November 30th, 2016, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $100,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Therefore, it be ordered that $100,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Hampshire Council of Governments for the Hampshire County Courthouse Restoration Project. The grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, $100,000 is appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve. We have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
So CPA funds were previously used to contribute to repairs of the front steps, which came out really great at the courthouse, as well as some other items. And the Council of Government's next plan is to deal with the tower. You can see in the photo on the left, there's some plants growing out of the parapet there that shouldn't be there. And in the other photo, you can see the damage to the mortar, and also you can see daylight from inside the building, which also is not a good thing. So the Council of, to come up with the funding to completely seal up the building and make sure it will last another few hundred years. And as the order says, this will only be used to match capital bond bill funds. They're not currently available, but if those are released by the state, then these funds will become available. And if they're not, then it will be returned to the committee.
Any questions, Counselor Barge?
How old is the courthouse?
First one burned, this is, I don't know if, do you know?
Old enough to be historic.
Yes, it's post-Chase Rebellion, which took place on the lawn. There was another building there that was made and burned after that.
Any other questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next one is 16-223, and this is an order for 51 Main Street, the historic building study for Smith Charities. Order that whereas Smith Charities submitted a CPA application for the historic building study of the Smith Charities Building at 51 Main Street. And whereas Smith Charities have operated continuously since 1865 from the building, which was designed by noted architect William Fennel Pratt and is located within the downtown National Register Historic District. And whereas the study will identify the most critical needs for the future restoration rehabilitation of the building to ensure that it will remain a unique part of the downtown streetscape. And whereas on November 30th, 2016, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $10,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support the project. Now therefore it be ordered that $10,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Smith Charities for Smith Charities Building Historic Study, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, the $10,000 is appropriated from the CPA Historic Reserve. Motion?
Make a motion.
Second? Questions for?
Point of order is 129 years old.
Wow.
The courthouse. Courthouse.
Okay.
Courthouse?
Yes.
That's old.
So this building is slightly older, but the way that the application was presented to the Community Preservation Committee by the Smith Charities, the will of Oliver Smith really prevents the charities from being able to access any of the funds for this type of study, which is really an important first step in determining how you need to deal with repairs to your historic buildings. So that you can see in the top photo, the brownstone is flaking apart, and on the inside that shows the second floor, which isn't heated, and some flaking paint and other damage. The Smith Charities really wants to know what's behind that.
Counselor Flynn?
So this is just for a study, right?
Yes.
And are they also prevented from using the funding for capital repairs?
They would be, yeah. So this would be only for a study to address the historic portion?
And is it likely that they will want to apply for funds for the repairs themselves as well?
They are, they could definitely come back. The committee made it clear to the applicant that CPA funds for that purpose probably wouldn't be able to be available.
Other questions on this one?
Counselor Murphy, you've worked in that building.
Yeah, I'm actually not going to be able to vote on this here or in the other meeting because I'm Northampton's elected representative to Smith Charities. So I can tell you a lot about it, but I can't vote on it.
Would you speak to the building? Actually, one other question. How do you, how do you restore that level of disintegration on sandstone?
That would be something a preservation consultant would have to figure out. It doesn't have to be replaced. Can you patch it? And Smith Charities just really doesn't know what to do with it.
What they do is they treat it so it stops flaking, because it's a soft stone, so it flakes. And I think it is actually the same stone that's in the Smithsonian. And it comes from a quarry in Glastonbury, Connecticut. And those snoots in Glastonbury will not let the quarry be used anymore to get any stones out of it to fix the Smithsonian or little buildings like this, because they don't want the quarry running anymore, so. But it's really, it's the oldest building on that block. And people don't know, Oliver died before the Civil War. He died before 1850, so. And his will is very specific. They invest the funds in real estate mortgages, because he didn't trust the stock market. And then all the proceeds are supposed to be given away to the beneficiaries. So it really, they literally spend themselves broke every year, giving all the money away with just a small portion of it for sustaining the operation. And there's two funds. There's one, the general fund that gives money away to one group of beneficiaries, and there's another fund, and it's only about $260,000, the proceeds of which go to Smith Folk. So the money that actually goes to Smith Folk every year is a very small amount of money. And you'll hear, you'll hear them talking about the Smith Charities money.
We send the Albert card in.
Yeah, we, you can carry it up in one small bag. It's, you know, it's somewhere in the $6,000 or $7,000 range now, I think, is all that comes from there. But what they did, originally, the money sat for 60 years and was invested, and then the principal bought the land and built the original school. But the funds that go from the charity of the school now are minimal, quite minimal. But then again, it's been since, like, 18, the will was, what, 1848 or '49 or something? So it's quite old.
So is there a longer-range plan for once this study is produced, how these capital improvements will be funded?
It really sounds like they were going to approach it when they got the results of the study. At this point, they really, they don't know what the recommendations might be or what their options might be going forward. But this step was a really important one to have them figure out what they needed to do.
Any other questions? It's a really neat old building. I know Bruce Krawitzky, who's on Central Business, and he's, was professionally historic preservation architect, went to look at it, and he thought it was wonderful. He got really excited about it.
So they've already been told that it's unlikely if they apply the Smith Charities funds once they know the next step forward that they would get them?
Yes.
So as Counselor Flynn was saying, there's not clear what would happen then after they've expended the money for the study?
No, no. But the committee felt strongly that this is an important downtown building, and regardless of what, even maybe what the ownership might be in the future, that this is, this study is something that really needs to be done.
It's unique in that they built it, and they've been in it the entire time. It's the oldest building on that part of Main Street, and they've been there.
It was built specifically for?
For them, and they've occupied it ever since.
So what's been done over the years for maintenance? I mean, obviously, there's a great deal of maintenance that needs to be done that hasn't been done, but something must have been done in the past 100, whatever years.
Well, for instance, it has its original slate roof that they've maintained over the years. It has, it has had work done to it in the time, because I've been on this board longer than the city council, so they've done work to it. They've done windows, they've done different things to it. But the real thing that hinders them is this low interest rate environment. You know, because their money is all in real estate mortgages, and when you're getting 3.5% for a real estate mortgage, it cut down on the money that they have available for the beneficiaries and then also for anything else. So it's been a tough eight years or so. Counselor?
I guess my, my only concern is that if we're approving money to kind of be sunk into a study, as it were, that the trustees are also thinking about, you know, what, how funds might be raised to actually do any of the work. I mean, usually when you're looking at a capital improvement plan, you're thinking kind of long-range about how you're actually going to fund what you find out needs to be done. And I'm just kind of surprised that that didn't come hand-in-hand. It doesn't go hand-in-hand with requesting the funding for a study. You know, just some vision about how, in fact, it will be, the costs will be covered.
There is underutilized space in the building, which the applicants mentioned that they could possibly rent out in the future. It would, it would need to be updated and worked on, but working on that aspect of the study isn't something that the Community Preservation Committee could fund. So this is just looking at the historic aspects.
Counselor?
I think it could be for low and some housing.
I possibly could. It could, it could be a lot of things in the future.
But then we, then it's CP, they could fund.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for Sarah? Hearing none, then, in finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And note my abstention. All right, so we're off to Mineral Hills. This is 16-224. Order that whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission and the Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted a CPA application for the purchase of 53-acre parcel in the southern Mineral Hills. And whereas it is an environmentally important location that includes a cold water stream and will provide opportunities for trail and habitat connections. And whereas the threat of residential development exists in an area that is not an appropriate location resulting in lost wildlife protection opportunities. And whereas the project meets the goal of the Sustainable Northampton Plan, Northampton Community Preservation Plan, Open Space Recreation Multi-Use Trail Plan, and to protect open space and provide for passive recreation, and will also create affordable housing opportunities. Whereas on November 30th, 2016, the Northham Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $240,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support the project. Now therefore it be ordered that $240,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability for the Mineral Hills to Barnes Aquifer Open Space Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, $150,000 is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve, and $90,000 is appropriated from CPA Undesignated Reserve. We have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
All right, so this map shows the location of this parcel within the city. It's, it has frontage on Glendale Road and Route 66, and that green space that it's abutting is the open space associated with the ridge. And this was previously approved, as the next slide shows, for a 25-watt subdivision. It includes a cold water stream. It's a really neat area, lots of deer, lots of bear. I walked around it a lot. It's just kind of unique and interesting. And although it's not part of the CPA request, there are four affordable housing units being, affordable housing lots being created adjacent to Glendale.
Then Counselor Barge is ready for this one.
Yes. I went to planning on that on a hearing. Counselor Bill Dwight was there also in regards of doing away the 24 houses going into the four affordable homes, and which through Habitat is going to be placing them. Well, that 53 acres was involved also of keeping that open space. Otherwise, yes, there will be development there. There's no question about it. It is a threat. The amount of wildlife, and I have stated this before, is unbelievable. And I was just telling Counselor Dwight tonight about all the deers and so forth, and they're traveling, and we've had moose up there. We have it all. And it's very critical that we protect that 53 acres along by West Stanton Road and Glendale Road. So then eventually it will connect with the ridge and so forth.
Lions and tigers and bears.
We got those, too.
Other questions for Ms. Vallee? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And the last one, we've reached the end, 16-225, an order for the Northampton Conservation Fund that's administered by the Conservation Commission. Order that whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Conservation Fund. And whereas the fund makes possible increased acquisition or protection of open space parcels in Northampton by supporting fast action on time-sensitive real estate opportunities. And whereas the project may leverage additional public and/or private funds. And whereas the project meets the goal of the Northampton Sustainability Plan for protection of open space and agricultural lands. And whereas the applicant has used these funds effectively in the past towards the protection of several hundred acres of open space, reflecting the goals established by the Community Preservation Committee. And whereas only land purchases will be reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission and the city council. Whereas on November 30th, 2016, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $80,000 in Community Preservation Funds be used to support the project. Now therefore it be ordered that $80,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Fund, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, the $80,000 is allocated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. We have a motion on this one?
Second?
Second? Any questions for Sarah? This is just sort of your quick action money to grab parcels.
So there's no slide for this one, but we could have included pictures of any number, hundreds of acres of open space that have been protected over the years. This is the 11th CPA request to fund this, and it will help the Conservation Commission preserve a lot of the areas that are currently working.
Counselor?
When, when it says the project meets the goals of the Northham Sustainability Plan, et cetera, certainly that's not the exact figure, referring to an exact figure of 80,000. So I'm just wondering, what's the, why 80?
So this means that the acquisitions going forward will meet those goals?
Just generally?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission is working on things that are further in the goals of those plans.
And is there any reason why 80 as opposed to more or less? Or just, is that just kind of what was left over?
No, there's, I think, there's about $70,000 left over for the next, next round, $35,000, and that will be reserved for historic preservation. $80,000 was the request that came in from the Conservation.
It was requested.
This time. It's been as low as $10,000 and up to $100,000 over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Bidwell?
So these funds to use for like, like, option payments and due diligence expenses in anticipation of then coming to the council for final approval on an acquisition?
The Conservation Commission doesn't, doesn't pay for options. They haven't had to over the years because the commission and their staff has such a good track record acquiring things. But it's, it is used for pre-acquisition-type things, surveys, title searches, legal work, hazardous waste assessments, whatever happens to come up for a particular parcel. So, and without a lot of those funds, and you're sort of sitting still with the funds that are involved.
And when, when, when final funding comes through and an acquisition's made, is it possible to replenish some of those pre-acquisition costs, or they pretty much gone as?
Generally not. It's usually for things like surveys and cleanups and things like that, that we can't, it's not really a revolving loan in that sense.
Counselor Barge?
Yes, this is a routine we go through yearly. This is not the first time we go through this yearly with this comes in, because quick quick action that might...
Any other questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have come to the end of the agenda. Is there any new business? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Did you all just stick around?
I think you're good, sir. Stay warm. So we go back into regular session now, and then let's revisit those things that you just spoke about. Item 16.216 is an order to authorize the purchase of five and a half acres on Burt's Pitt Road for its reading. I'll accept a motion.
To approve.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? This is the Comiskey Acquisition Order. No? Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Barge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Counselor Bigwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
That passes in first. So next up, we have items 16.218 to 16.225. I don't know if you want to address them as a group, or you want me to parse these out? Parse one out?
Yes.
Yeah, take Smith. Oh, the Smith Charities for... Okay. But is it the counsel's pleasure to take all the other items except for the item 16.223?
Yes.
Yes, move them as a group.
Okay, I'll accept that motion. Someone's going to move it.
I'll move it.
Okay.
With the exception of 223,51.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, and I'll read those include the... This is the Community Preservation Committee's recommendations for funding, and it'll be first reading that includes 16.218, the Beaver Brook-Broadbrook Greenway Improvements, Broadbrook Coalition Elite Civic Association, for $16,947. The other item is 16.219, Burt's Bog Affordable Housing and Open Space Office Planning and Sustainability with... Okay, $234,700. And then the Broadbrook, excuse me, Broadbrook Beaver Brook Acquisition. This is the Conservation Commission's $40,000.
It's 40 because I called Pam on that.
Right. It's a, so it's a $40,000, and that's a scribbler's error. The, and then the item 16.221 is the Connecticut River Greenway Improvement, Hampton Office Planning and Sustainability for $90,000. 16.222, the Hampshire County Courthouse Restoration, Hampshire Council of Government, $100,000. Item 16.224, Mineral Hills Acquisition, the Northampton Conservation Commission, $40,000. And then finally, item 16.225, Conservation Fund, Northampton Conservation Commission, for $80,000.
Move to approve.
But motion's been made and seconded already. Any discussion? Roll call on these items.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Barge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Counselor Bigwell?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Barge?
Yes. Okay, that's the first reading. That brings us up to item 16.223, 51 Main Street Historic Building Study, for Smith Charities, $10,000. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Count that as a second, moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor O'Donnell?
Yeah, I feel a little awkward because Ms. LaValle left, but I was kind of reading up, reading again the CPC application after she spoke about it. And I was noting a few things I have questions about. One of them is, I mean, the whole cost of this study is not $10,000. It's more like $36,000 according to what their estimates are from Smith Charities. Originally, they asked for $17,500, and they contemplated it as a match from the Mass Historic Commission. So that's one question. And then they said somehow $7,500 is going to come from other communities. But the very application also said it seemed unlikely that that would happen. So one question is, you know, the order previous to that is, with regards to Hampshire County Courthouse, that says the CPA funds will only be used as a match with capital bond funds. And if not, it comes back to us. I'm wondering if it makes sense to have such a provision in this, even though it's only $10,000. I mean, I say that, $10,000 is $10,000. If there's no match from the Historic Commission, you know, can the money come back? And is the whole point of the study, I mean, is the study not funded unless those matches are given? What happens with just the $10,000? Maybe others know.
I mean, that, I would presume, but I don't know, that if they don't meet the conditions of the grant, which is to produce a study, then the money reverts back to the CDC. That's my...
And these are reimbursements. They got to spend the money, and then when they've spent the money, then they ask for reimbursement. So these guys don't get the money. Nobody gets the money upfront. They do the project and they get reimbursed.
That's absolutely true.
Yeah, so if they don't, if any of these projects don't get their matches or whatever, they can't spend the money to get the reimbursement.
I still, I mean, just, I guess I do still have some reservation raised by others about what's the point of a study if there's no plan to go forward with actually implementing the study. But I don't know if anyone else wants to last minute assuage my concerns, or if that's just something we have...
Well, you know, I was thinking about this, and one way to actually get something like this moving is at least to have an assessment to real, to understand what it is you're facing. I do agree that it's, if you had a longer, broader vision or greater hopes for access to funds. But, you know, it's true, you can't have a, do a capital campaign if you don't have some type of proposal or some sense of assessment of what it is you're facing. There may be, and this study may reveal it's not solvable. That's one of the determining factors, I think, in that respect. Then, you know, that pretty much changes the whole course of...
No, thank you. I, actually, on that point, I find that pretty convincing, so thank you.
Counselor...
I was going to make very much the same point. I've seen capital campaigns start with just a feasibility study, or an engineering study or something to document the nature and the magnitude of the problem, without it being at all clear at that point how it's going to be solved, where the dollars will come from. But it's a critical piece of making the case. And it may or may not ultimately be that dollars are there, but I think it's a worthwhile starting point to hopefully protect a very historically significant building.
Counselor Barge and then Counselor Nash?
I have to agree with what Counselor Bigwell just stated. I think it's a significant historical building here in the city of Northampton, and I have to agree that this is just the beginning by doing the study.
Officer Nash?
A few years back with Ward 3 Neighborhood Association, we were in a similar debate about a historic structure in Ward 3. And one of the distinctions here is that this is for funding the plan rather than funding the project. Yes, thank you. And that, and that I remember during our deliberations that if the plan, if the application back then were for funding a plan so that they could go forward and fund their project, you know, we would have backed that. But so in this case, since it's for the plan, I'm going to back it.
Counselor Scher, then.
Counselor Murphy, can I just ask you a kind of a point of curiosity for me? That lot that is next to that building, is that owned by the building? Thanks.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
And I guess to the point the counsel from Ward 3 was making, another distinction, if you're referring to, I think you are, which is the condos on Union Street, the old jail. I guess the other distinction, well, in that case, the problem, at least for me, was it's a beautiful building with historic value, but it's privately used. And I guess in this case, I mean, it's a, it is private, you know, but it has a public purpose in that it's a charitable organization that directly makes contributions to the community. So it's another significant factor. So, anyway, thank you for the discussion on that.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? All those in favor, please... Oh, we're doing...
Aye.
Sorry, it's another roll call. Yep.
Counselor Barge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
This is my abstention.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Counselor Bigwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, first reading. We've done number 11 on your agenda, and move up to 12, ordinances, item 16.184. This is for referral to the unlegislative matters, an ordinance relative to heavy equipment operation.
Move to return. Second?
Second. Discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Item 16.233 is an ordinance relative to Park on Center and Market Streets. It's a refer to the unlegislative matters. Accept a motion?
Move to refer.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And then item 16.214 is an ordinance relative to a yield sign on Maple Street, and it's to refer to the unlegislative matter.
Move to refer.
Okay. The motion's been seconded for the referral. Any discussion on the referral? Counselor O'Donnell?
Just, I'll note that the idea conceptually was already approved by the Transportation and Parking Commission.
No. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. That brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is a motion to return. Is there one?
So moved.
Second. Those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Stay warm.